Good evening, we are now going to call this meeting to order, it is seven oh one. Aiden, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Franklin.
Action.
Commissioner Brooks, here.
Commissioner Corbin.
Here.
President.
Commissioner Probat.
Here.
All the members are here?
Yes, all of them are here. Public Works Director, Nonna Wong.
Here.
Town Administrator, Clay Anderson.
Present.
Police Chief Burris.
I believe he's going to join us on zoning, but he'll be coming in a little later.
Okay.
All right. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we're all here.
President, you just apply that what the United States of America and to their brother for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Can we now review the agenda?
Yes. We will firstly review the police base grant funds, because definitely both a board vote. From there, we will be introducing ordinance twenty twenty four oh four, property standards. And I think continuing with our charge of, um, the volume of the comments.
Do we have a consent to agenda?
Uh, yeah. Uh, move to approve the agenda, as is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Franklin. Commissioner, uh, Brooks. Free. Commissioner Corbin.
Aye.
Commissioner Watt.
Aye.
Hi.
Probat.
Okay, so motion to, uh, consent of the agenda. Now moving on to the next thing, we'll have business.
Um, sure, so just, just to clarify, we briefly did that, as is, I think we have to do a second motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
So, a move that we approve the consent agenda, as noted in the packet.
Your second?
Second.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Corbin.
Aye.
Commissioner Watt.
Aye.
Commissioner Probat.
Aye.
Mr. Kerry.
Um, first business item, police office grant funds, uh, this is a grant of fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars, which is in consideration of providing, uh, security, um, elements to the new, uh, police space. Um, so these are funds that, uh, I think cover some police cameras, uh, some other visibility items, uh, and if Chief jumps on later, he can give a little bit more detail, but if, uh, items that we are, uh, we're approving, the authorization of these funds, which will be, uh, supplemented or paid for by a grant specifically for outfitting the police space. He's here?
Yes, he's joining my call.
Okay. Chief Burris, did you have anything, um, more on, or any, anything more you wanted to share on the grant? What it's covering?
Um, it pretty much covered it, um, the grant has already been approved, it's just that, I guess, we need to have the board to approve the actual spending amount, because it's more than the, uh, ten thousand dollars, but the grant was approved, I believe, in June, so, we were able to get the, um, the final invoice, so it just needs a board vote, and just so you know, I'm actually on my way there, I'm on Pennsylvania Avenue.
Okay. Any two comments?
Unless any commissioners have comments.
Anyone have any comments?
We're just saying it's okay to use the grant that he obtained to use for the space.
Mm-hmm, the amount of money, the proven amount of money.
With our, with our procurement, Arden, anything over ten thousand dollars in the expenditure, we have to approve it.
So we want to open up the public comment? Does anybody have any comments? Come on up to the podium, please.
Uh, I, this Lieutenant, um, for a grant, I just have one question, how much is this for? Because I guess such that the grant money is there, but there's a little extra that needs to be taken care of, that's the impression I got, how much is it for in total, and how much are we going to go for?
Okay. Next public comment?
Uh, George, I'm over at Pike, um, this is regards to the new police space, um, is that actually subject to mandatory referral?
Okay, we will address your questions later. Um, now we will move on to ordinance, ordinance, uh, twenty twenty four. When I'm voting out?
Can we answer that?
You can answer the questions.
Yeah.
Uh, the total amount of the grant is fourteen thousand nine hundred. Um, mandatory referral, I may have to defer on, on that question. Chief, are you able to provide any response?
What is this? And the question, mandatory deferral for what?
I mean, word, uh, change of, um, public buildings or use of space is required to be approved by, uh, NTTCC.
I heard with space is required.
Uh, yes ma'am. We've been in, um, contact with our complaining commission and the zoning office, as well as D-PY, um, regarding this matter, the zoning for the property includes office space for governmental, um, agencies, and we have been advised that if you do not take a permit, that will be issued, uh, or should be issued for the space for this particular use, but they will not know for sure until we file and goes through the entire process. Right now, that's where we are, is once the lease is done, then we can apply for the exact permission, they won't let us get, um, approvals or zoning certificates for it.
Well, there's, I mean, the change of use of a structure is also considered, is required, you know, triggers mandatory referrals, but I'm moving the police station out of this building also within.
Jill, if you want to speak, please come up to the podium, let's do it. Come on up.
Uh, wait a minute, excuse me, can I say something real quick?
Sure, Chief.
Can you all, like, table this for maybe seven minutes, I'm getting ready to get on the ramp to Old Crane Highway, because I can't hear what you guys are saying, it's, it's going in and out.
Yes, we will table it.
So I'll be there in like, seven minutes.
Okay, no problem. So we're going to move on to, we will table this until the end, when Chief arrives. We'll go to the draft ordinance, twenty twenty four dash oh four, property standards introduction. Aiden?
I can repeat the title out, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four oh four, uh, section regular town meeting, introduced September twenty fourth, uh, twenty twenty four. The ordinance of the board commissioners from the town of Marlboro, so man, all ordinances, previously enacted. Previously enacted leading to property managed standards in the town of Marlboro, and to an active ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty four oh four, adopting property managed standards for the town of Marlboro, repealing all provisions of prior town ordinances that are inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance.
Can I do a board discussion? If I have any questions?
Um, sure, so, just level setting, this is the formal introduction of the ordinance that we've been discussing over the past several, uh, months at this point. Uh, the property standards ordinance, which would, uh, essentially adopt the, uh, county's, um, property standards, uh, some nuances that are, you know, related to the town, but this is part of the discussion we've had for some while, so, I think at this point, it is, uh, open for discussion amongst the board, and then, again, open for public comment as well.
So, um, I have a follow-up question. So we're adopting the town standards, is there any way to add in here for the county to be also held responsible and accountable for their buildings that they have here? We're taking this route, and, like, considering what we've got from the county.
It's my understanding. Yes, absolutely. Is that the town wanted to seek the assistance of the county in the enforcement of, uh, property standards within the town? And in talking to the county, the county had indicated that if the town had adopted property standards that were similar to the county's, it would be in, in the best position to do that, because they know their own code, right? That's all that this really is doing, is adopting the county provisions, giving us some, um, authority to enforce those provisions, but also it opens it up to you asking for assistance from the county. Now, them being responsible for their own, if they already are responsible for their own buildings, just like any other property owner.
Yeah, but we're not really holding them accountable per se, they have abandoned buildings right here, and, you know, one of his towns, so, like, if, like, in my opinion, we can't have a car under a cover, then I don't think we should have an abandoned school building right on waterfront property. I don't want to keep on harping on this, but I also don't see how this is benefiting our residents. I was under the impression this was to benefit the downtown businesses, and to improve economic development down there. But now I feel like we've gone a completely different direction, in which residents are not happy. Um, and it's not just my husband, right? Like, it's a lot of people, and so, I like, I feel really hesitant to move forward, just because the rest of the board wants this, when my heart isn't in it, because I went with this for a different reason. So it's, it was just another question I wanted to ask, if we're being, if we're bothering people over a car, then what are we doing to bother the county to take care of those issues that have been sitting around for, or, like, almost as old as I am? You know? That's where I'm at, so.
Um, I remember last meeting, you said that we had to adopt, um, we had to adopt the property standards. Go ahead, not me, okay.
But state law requires that you have adopted property.
Right. So we could have created our own, but we decided to go with the county, so we can merge with them.
So easier.
Right, so it could be easier, understood.
So, I guess the only thing that I'm, like, I'm really questioning is, obviously, twenty-three A violations, whatever, but it's, how do we say, also, people that are taking forty percent of our property in downtown really need to maintain the property? Because that's really where the focus is, when we started this whole property standards, was going to be for downtown, for the economy, so, and yes, I think everybody, like, I, I feel like I'm true to myself, I think every, all property standards around town need to be improved, everyone. But, I wanted to start downtown, make the residents happy with what we've got, and then push forward with, okay, now we have this beautiful space, now we need to expand that beautiful space, right? But I just feel like we're going so hard on the residents, um, and that's just my impression from a handful of people that have reached out to me personally, and so, um, like, I don't know if there is legal ways that it could be, I hear, that's really my question. Is, is there a way to add something on that section twenty-three A per violations and, um, penalties and enforcement?
So I think, what I was just going to say, I think that is, the question is, as a municipality, do we have,
You're right.
Are there even enforcement, you know, actions that we can take on the county, which I, I, I don't know, I would doubt, but I don't know, but I think part of the other, and I'm, yeah, but I think the other part of it is relating to the county buildings, I think that's another lever that we have to pull as a, which we, which we've done this past year, which is getting in front of the county, having these conversations, actually showing them, uh, you know, the, the, the benefit of, uh, either rehabbing those buildings or doing something with those buildings, but having that, or, us being a part of that conversation, so I don't know if that's something that we're going to be able to address within the property standards ordinance, but developing that strategy amongst us.
And it also builds a relationship.
Right.
It also builds a relationship, so we have, we have, right, so that we have leverage to talk to them about it.
But my concern is, like, did we meet some of those important people in Congress, or, or council members, right? Just enough for us to back off and be forgotten again? Or this is squeaky, um, wheel could agree. So, I want to make sure that we are setting ourselves up, not just for now, but for in the future, that this doesn't happen again. Roads are not maintained, sidewalks are not maintained, and there's not much the town can do about it, because, you know, these are government buildings. So how do we make sure that we're doing all of this, and we're implementing these ordinances, but it also benefits the town, and it covers the town in the event, which has already happened, that the county forgets about it? So, that's what I'm worried about, I don't want to, like, I know we met a bunch of wonderful people here, I met Senator Watson, I met Blafo, I met everybody, and they were all great, I have no negative things, but I don't want to be forgotten again.
Good point.
Oh, I, sorry.
You have anything?
No.
Um, no, I, I agree with you, I agree with you, and like, I'll just say again, I think that part of that is us continuing to, you know, us not backing off as well, in terms of having those conversations for question meetings, getting folks down here, uh, showing them what's around, I mean, we, we got, you know, State Highway, did the new sidewalk on Old Crane, we had D-PY come and issue fines to some of the buildings downtown that caused them to fix some of those things, so I think, I think, again, not, not missing what you're saying at all, but, you know, I think we, we as a board also have to, you know, make sure that, if we don't want to get left behind, we have to make sure that we're, you know, constantly in their face of part of that conversation as well. That may be the lever that, if, and exist in this document, that we have to make sure that we're pulling as well. Sound like that?
Yeah. Senator Watt, you have anything?
Well, I think you all are, uh, bringing up a new issue, uh, with respect to the word. If there is something that you want to address, I can look into that.
Okay.
But I do think that you raised, the bigger issue is to make the county aware of the problems that you're having, maybe, do you have an itemized list of the buildings that are at issue? And what the issues are, that we can take it to the county?
Yeah, I mean, I could probably make a list, but I know that there's more things out there that I'm not aware, you know? Um, like, I didn't know that the building right in front of the pond was soon to be abandoned as well, so those are little things I'm not in the loop about, and so, who knows, two, a year from now, I'm probably not going to be commissioner, so how do we make sure that the next commissioner doesn't have to deal with the unknown, right? And how do we cover ourselves for that? And, and that's just my thinking, it's really, right now, we know, we're, we're talking about it, we've talked to everybody else about it, but in the future, how do we prevent something like this happening again? And if we can include it in our ordinances, I think that would be beneficial for the town, but like I said, I don't know really how a town holds the county accountable, and if there's even a way to do that. And also, I, I'm very worried about, we worked hard on those relationships, I don't want to sever those small bridges that we've built, so, you know, like, it feels almost like I'm not even allowed to ask the question, because I don't want to, like, make people angry, upset, because I don't want it to come off as, like, they haven't, you know, talked to us or addressed these things yet, so, that conversation happened months ago, right? And we haven't seen any movement, and also, I don't know, maybe Sierra's working on something, and, you know, do we miss drop full time?
Maybe we can invite them to another conversation, maybe we can invite them to have another conversation before we make any final decisions.
Yeah, I would like, actually, that's a great idea, like, if we could meet with them, um, and put this in front of them and be like, okay, we're trying to establish these ordinances, like, how do you come into the picture to help support this?
But the ordinance that we're talking about is for the residents' rights.
If there are properties within the town. Okay, so it would be commercial?
Mm-hmm.
It would be the resident's home town.
We open it up to the, uh, residents, public comment?
Sheriff, I'm over at Pike, and I, I got my, not a citation against this one, fraction, discovered it when I went to pick up a package and realized I'd been there more than a week. Um, so my comments first, um, in the title, it says that it is repealing all provisions of prior town ordinance, or any consistent with provisions of this ordinance, but I found no actual section that does that. Um, and that could be significant, I mean, if you just make a blanket statement like that, you know, there's, there's a regulation on trash cans in the town, does that count as a property standard? And if so, if that one's not severable, does that get rid of all of the other parts of that ordinance? And so I think you need to review and make sure you call out exactly what you are, um, taking out, or someone could argue, hey, that ordinance doesn't apply anymore. Section four, applicability of and compliance of chapter, uh, requires a bold repair, uh, of any building or structure within the town, get a building permit. Um, there was a place that I have a damaged shed, and then I need to paint, so that qualifies as repairs, and so then I do, I need to then file a permit to be allowed to, um, in my case, I need to replace my drip edge, chaslet, the paint, I have to let a basement, to replace my drip edge, so I can then off and paint my house. Um, and so, at what level of repair qualifies now needing a building permit? Um, and I noticed that there was at least one instance of city, I don't know if there are any more, but I recommend looking for those and make sure that this town is not city. Um, and with our inch eighteen of the package, section D says, has a blank in it, uh, penalties are set forth in sections Y, I assume that's twenty-three.
Thank you.
Do you have a public comment on that?
All right, folks, hopefully you can hear me, this is Brian Callicott, Church Street.
We can, we can hear you.
Excellent, so just a couple points to, uh, to talk about the county, we used to have a liaison with the town, a county liaison, and I don't know if we do now, if you can name a person, that would be great, because that means we're in the loop, but if not, I think it worthy to ask for such, because having someone you could call on a regular basis, I mean, if you needed something ad hoc, is probably pretty important, given that the entire, Prentiss County Courts are in our town, Sheriff's is right outside of town, the, you know, some of the county folks are still in town. It's really, really important, given how much of infrastructure that they use, I think it is at least, to have someone that you could just go straight to, who would then have the end with all the other departments, instead of having to go everywhere to find information, you could at least have a liaison to help you to get to the right people. Because every administration is two years at a time, people are always in a learning position, and they may not know, and it'd be nice if the county could say, hey, we have a semi-permanent person who's available to you, who can work with whatever the administration is, whoever the new town, uh, folks are, the new administrator, who'd get through any problems we have with the county, instead of letting them sit just because we don't know. That's point one, and point two is, thank you Alma for talking about the old Marlboro Elementary School, also, the old stone building comes to mind. I think it worthy, and it can't come from just me, because I've tried, oh my God, I've tried, to just ask them, the county, hey, put some central services money towards these buildings that you have, and maintain them, please. If they are your buildings, until you access them or auction them off, you have a responsibility to maintain them and make them safe and look nice, to help our town draw new businesses to it. That's, that's my soapbox, and I really do appreciate Alma that you did bring that up, because that's been a big point for me for the past ten years, thank you.
Thank you. You there?
Sure.
Okay, we're going to go into charter review.
Yes, ma'am.
So were you interested?
Well, I guess we should table it. Okay. Okay, so, I would rather take, do you guys want to table it? Or you want to?
You mean the property standards?
Yes.
I mean, I know all about the property standards with my HOA, so I'm very familiar with it. But we can, we can table it.
If Alma has some more concerns, I think we should.
Can we set a date when we're tabling it, too?
Yeah, well, I mean, I need to talk to some of the county folks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make calls, and see if they'll meet with us. Um, so contingent on their schedule, really.
Let's look at the calendar. I need to put a date. The fifteenth, is that?
Is that the next meeting, the work session? Well, we can introduce it at a work session, session, it'd have to be the next town meeting.
We can always table it to the date to be determined, you don't have to.
Can we do that? Okay.
Generally speaking, we like to identify a date, just so we know when, and people who are listening know when it's going to come back, and they can do it. But if we are going to be looking to meet with other people for that, um, and we don't know what we can do that before then.
Okay, so Denise, the vote.
Uh, well, before we do that, do you mind if I enter?
Yeah, sure.
So, uh, I think one of the questions that Brian asked was about the municipal liaison, so the previous municipal liaison that the county had was Denise Roberts, who's since retired. The current municipal liaison is, I believe her name is Dorothea Roberts, uh, she's taken on the mantle, um, uh, for Denise, uh, and has been coordinating a lot of the activities, uh, for municipality, uh, throughout the town, uh, so, I think she was, I believe I met her at the Ocean City Conference, uh, MML Conference. Um, and then the other thing to, uh, Alma's point, I'll, I'll share, I was able to actually have a conversation with the director of the redevelopment authority for the county, uh, and shared a lot of that information as well, in terms of talking about what the untaxable base is of the town, because of county buildings, uh, how these buildings have been sitting for a while, giving them kind of a walkthrough of what, you know, areas exist in and around the town, so that's part of, uh, at, at, at least for me, to your point, it's just reaching out and having those conversations, getting folks to see and understand what kind of that impact is, so hopefully we can have more of those conversations, that folks really understand where this, where this is coming from as well, but I knew, I did want to share that that's something that's happening or hasn't happened.
Thank you.
Point, comment, not to take much time, um, I've always said since the beginning, especially the building across from the post office up on the hill, is a major eyesore. And I know the building, the sign, they recently tore it down. I don't know what they're going to do with that, I know that's owned by the, um, county government, but the building right across from the post office is a major eyesore, and I don't know what we can do. That, that, you know, that's, like other buildings in the town that are major eyesores, but yeah, that, especially that one from the post office, that, that. that, especially that one from the post office, that, that, on the top of the hill is just terrible, sitting there.
Okay, so, um, let's vote, poll a little call, even, make sure everybody's on the same page.
Commissioner Coleman, or Commissioner Brooks, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
No.
Commissioner Watt?
Yes.
Commissioner Favre?
Wait.
We're table, we're voting to table, so that you can do what you need to do as far as you're.
Aye.
Okay, motion count. Okay, we're gonna, uh, go to charter review.
Um, so for the charter review, we, uh, have brought this up at previous meetings, is doing kind of a look at our town charter, uh, and understanding, uh, we're trying to see if any changes make sense, and I think the purpose of having it as an agenda item for this meeting was again to solicit any public comment for particular areas that we may wanna take a look at, uh, or potentially revisit in terms of review, so I think this, unless we have any, the four of us have anything specifically now, I think, public comment section for, for anyone who has, I think they wanna.
Just wanna let the residents know that, um, it's been online, right, even? It's been publicized.
So that you can, um, for the very important resident, so they, everyone has the opportunity to review and to bring comments to the meeting, so, if you didn't know, I'll let you know.
Does anyone have any comments? Have any online?
Sure, we're playing a little more bike, um, I guess my, my biggest question on this whole process is, what's allowed to be in the charter? Um, so, I mean, I was, I was told by our previous town attorney that we had stuff in there that's not even supposed to be, such as, um, having penalties for noncompliance with the charter, he said that wasn't allowed to be in there, um, so, wouldn't be binding, but, um, I mean, what, what do other towns have in their charters that we don't? What's the goal of the whole thing? You know, there's a rather large section there about just, allowed to raise funds for parking garage, um, that would seem kind of out of place of it, but, I don't know, I know that the town's charter was based on some sort of template or blueprint, or whatever you wanna call it, uh, at some point, I don't know if there's a newer one that we should be looking at, you know, what parts are we missing out of the newer ones other than that, but just, you look at it, you know, section by section, it's really hard to say, you know, what's wrong other than, uh.
I think the purpose of the review is so that we can, um, update, make some changes, um, and to remove things that don't make sense, and that, um, the update should be more, um, forward-thinking, so I think that's basically why we want to review the charter review.
You know, I admit there's some strange things in there, like, the town's allowed to have an official town ban in the charter, but, you know, I mean, some of it, yes, it seems kind of archaic, but, you know, we don't have to use it, it's just giving us permission to do stuff that whether or not we use or not, and it's kind of binding, if you take it out, then, okay, leave it in for some reason.
Well, go online and make your comments, please. All right, um, we're gonna turn this back, um, we're gonna go back to Chief and turn it over to Chief, um, and address any questions that, um, were previously brought up.
Now that you're here, do you want to have any questions about the police office grant?
I think that, sorry, I think the two questions that came up were, one of them was, you know, one of the, the, the security measures that the grant funds are covering, if you high-level, uh, talked about that, and then the, those question was about mandatory referral, related to changing the use of a public space, uh, does that require mandatory referral by MNCP?
Attorney Ruff answered that.
Right.
She did answer it.
My understanding, Chief, you can correct me if I'm, but mandatory referral is generally for the government projects and utilities and things are changing. This, um, we've been advised by zoning and by D-PY that it's just a matter of a used occupancy permit review and, uh, we're both.
Yes, so, um, because the space was originally used for one thing, when you take on a new lease, you have to get permission to use it in that current space that you're going to lease it for. So, what we've done is, we've done preliminary information, got preliminary, preliminary information about the space that we can use it, because we're not changing the overall use, so.
That amplifies that, so, that gets back to what I was saying, that the zoning of the property allows for, um, commercial office space, and that office space is defined to include governmental agencies.
Yeah, so that's why, but we do that once we get the lease, we apply, and I have the information, um, I've already spoken to D-PY, and they said that the building ownership is in compliance, so all we have to do is move to get a U and O once we start to move forward, so. The grant was applied for in June, um, to be quite honest, this was not a, a regular grant, I went to the grants department and asked specifically to get money to help us move into the space, so, we gave them a number, and they approved it, so it was approved, I believe, in June, and so, we have until Monday to expend the funds, just because it's over a ten thousand dollar threshold, is why we have to vote, but the money is already allocated to the town for the long run, to do it. If it was less than that, we wouldn't have to.
All right, there is no more public comments, we will move to vote. Okay.
Is there a motion to, um.
To approve.
To approve the grant fund used for, uh, police, uh, police trade?
Don't move.
Second, sorry.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Watt?
Aye.
Watt?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
So, do we have any administrative updates?
Um, just one, uh, so Mayor Franklin asked me to, to share, as you see that she's not here this evening, uh, she had a medical situation over the weekend, she is, uh, recovering, she is active, she is engaged, uh, but she's not physically able to be present this evening, uh, so we are, you know, pretending to wish her, wish her speedy recovery, but she asked me to share that.
All right. Do we have any public comment about, um, wait, do we have any other administrative decisions at one, right? So.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jonelle, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, all recycle bins to every household have been distributed, um, you can use the old recycle bins as an extra, or you can block out the recycle one, and you can use it as a trash can, um, just in case there was any one that was missed, um, please, uh, just call here in town and make sure each one is moved forward.
All right.
I wanna say, um, excuse me, I wanna say something, trunk or treat, I'm on the events committee, and the events committee meets on Thursday, and we're working on the trunk or treat, um, we're just working on Christmas, so it's like, every Thursday we meet, and I wanna also thank all the volunteers that helped with the events committee, I know that takes a lot of their time out during the weekdays, but I just wanna give them an extra thank you for always attending and giving their inputs and helping out with all the events we do throughout the county, I mean, through, throughout the town.
So, uh, do we have any more public comment on any of the items we discussed this evening?
Yeah, there's a did discuss.
The items that we did.
This is general public.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Sure, we're playing a little more bike, for the people that are building board games, the next one will be, next one, that's part of it.
Senator Claire, spring grand strides, very nice comment about the, uh, events committee, but we have several other committees deep to deep in this race, and I would like to find out when they are, who gets them, and where we're gonna get them back. I have a historic committee that has nobody. We need to get our committee back in order. We have people who want to be in committee that have not been, so sooner or later, uh, I'll keep asking.
Um, may I speak or not? Are you guys okay? Uh, excuse me.
Hand to me.
Sarah and I are working on putting that back together, it's, it's on our list, that's just falling off, I agree with you, but we are slowly getting there, so, I'll be reaching out for the grant team soon, um, as for the other committees, but I know that it's something that we're working on together. I can at least say that.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh, we go, I see.
Call that out. Sure, we're playing a little more bike, I was trying to, for Commissioner, pretend it's possible, uh, sorry, pretend it's possible, uh, uh, that we may not be able to use the recycling containers as trash cans, because the town's ordinance or trash can says that they must have two lifting handles, must have a safety fitting liquid handle, and must not exceed thirty-two gallons in time.
Thank you. Okay, let's do the preliminary approval for the next meeting agenda, please. So, we have property standards in the charter to do public comment.
Do we have our ruling agenda at all on here?
Anything you need to add, anyone?
I'd like to start the discussion on the Continuum Operations Plan. Do you wanna bring up meeting regulations again? We're on it at the last meeting, but do you wanna talk about that again? Table it.
Yeah. You want to talk about anything for updates? Okay. So, do we have a consent to this agenda in the next meeting?
Is there a?
Aye. Is there a most?
Our, who's this preliminary agenda?
Yeah.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Watt?
Aye.
Watt?
Aye.
Who did the second? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
I mean, will we adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Second?
So, we need, we need Sarah, okay? Yeah, hurry up. I'm not something to do this.
Commissioner Coleman?
Aye.
Commissioner Favre?
Aye.
We are adjourned, good night, everyone.